I think at this time, I would like to ask either Mr. Iadrola or his designated to give the council a brief rundown on the interlocal utilities assessment.
The interlocal agreement has two parts to it. I'm trying to think of which one I will discuss first with you. Why don't we do the water piece of it first? There is a... the Department of Public Health really likes to have as many interconnections between water systems as possible. And there's probably a good reason for that, you can imagine. It gives us some flexibility. God forbid if we have an issue, one town or city has an issue with their water system, we can connect, interconnect with each other very easily. The Timber Oaks Emergency Interconnection is one of these two DEP or Department of Public Health desired connections. And it will only come into play once Bethel builds their new water tank, which will be at an elevation where we could benefit from the exchange of water from one to the other. This interconnection, without their water tank, would only benefit Bethel. So they understand that when their new water tank comes in, it has to be at an elevation where we would also have some benefit from this interconnection. So that'll all be engineered. The second interconnection is the Chelsea Height Interconnection. This is an interconnection that will strictly, unless another emergency occurs, it would only come into play should Chelsea Height have a major fire and they could not provide enough water or volume to put that fire out. They would then, under that circumstance, utilize this fire connection, interconnection. There would be meters on both ends, so whatever water they use, we would track it. And because there's going to be some upgrades to our shelter rock pump station and the Pro's Nest tank, we're going to be securing a $205,000 payment from Bethel for those upgrades. And there's a variety of upgrades. Sorry if I want to bore you with all that stuff. But so, that interconnection would require an upgrade of our pump station, and we're going to get $205,000 from Bethel to make that upgrade, okay? Do you want to keep going, or you want to take some questions on that?
If you don't, I'll ask for a motion on the agreement, and then we can do the questions under that.
Perfect, okay. We'll get into the sewer. Just to give you a little timeline, Payne Road residents on 3/25/04 requested that the city look at providing sewers for their properties, for their properties. On 6 of 2004, county council actually authorized the mayor to set up a negotiating committee to look at the interlocal agreement in order to provide sewer for these residents. So that's how this whole sewer request came into play. Without getting involved with Bethel, the only, the cheapest alternative way to sewer these properties was about a million and change, just a little bit over a million dollars. So if we did not want to get involved with Bethel, we could service these residents by installing an independent sewer line, which would cost us just over a million dollars. The most cost-effective way to do it is to actually send this sewage to Bethel and have them pump it back to us, which is kind of interesting. We send it in, they send it back. I thought it was funny.
It must be a crowd.
So, no, it's like that. Anyway. So our due diligence is to provide the best and the cheapest sewer opportunities for the people that requested it. We felt that by sitting down with Bethel and discussing this sewer alternative, that we would be providing the best alternative for the people that requested the sewer. The cost is $410,000. This is the amount that would have to be shared by all of the property owners. And out of that $410,000, 350 of that is actually a fee that goes to Bethel for the impact that we've had on their infrastructure. 10,000 of that is for some engineering work that we have to spend in order to get to, to get to understand the flows and the impact on Bethel's sewer system. And then there's $25,000 for meters, because every property will have to have a meter, to make sure that we don't go over the 21,000 gallons per day that we are actually contracting to Bethel to send to them, that they will send to us. And then there's a 6.5% administrative fee for the city of Danbury. This is for attorneys and all the other accounting costs that go into it. And you add them all up, it comes up to $410,000. Because time was of the essence, we did tell Bethel to install the laterals for these properties, or else what would happen is they would finish their sewer system, the laterals wouldn't be installed, and we would have to really pay four times as much to dig up the road. So while they had the roads dug up, we did give them authorization, $22,000, to install the laterals for these properties. And it's amazing, because that's about as much interesting information as I have for you tonight. I do want to tell you just a quick, I do want to mention this. There was a strong interest in 2004 for servicing these properties. We did do a mailing, the results of the mailing, November 4, 2008. We had three people, out of the 12 properties, three people said yes, two people said no, and seven people did not respond. One of the seven people is CLMP property, so I know they just have power lines on their property, that's probably the reason why they didn't respond. But we were going to make some phone calls and just see why we have such a high no response from these, from these property owners. But right now, like I said, there's three yeses, two nos, seven no response, one of the seven we know is CLMP property, they won't be responding anyway, because all they're doing is servicing power lines there. So I figured that's a quick recap of our mailing results, okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, I just want to mention one thing. When we started negotiating with Bethel, is Bethel in the house? They wanted $2 million. So we got them, we collectively, after four months, five months, we got them down to $410,000. And really, all they're getting is $350,000, okay? The rest is really our cost. Thank you.
What's your pleasure, Councilman? I have number one. Mr. Calabria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the county council approve the extension of sewer service to residents and property owners on Payne Road. And...
Mr. Visconti?
And authorize the mayor to execute said proposed Bethel-Danbury agreement presented.
Anybody like to second that? Mr. Visconti?
I'll try and second that.
Motion has been made, and seconded under discussion. Through the chair, thank you, Mr. President, to the Director, Mr. Prado DeRola.
Tony, if you could just recap, we're going to let Bethel use the pressure from some of our tanks, and at some point, they're going to build some tanks, and we'll be able to use the pressure from some of their tanks.
An emergency.
An emergency, okay. What would it take down the road to actually have Bethel start using our water on a regular basis as opposed to an emergency basis? What kind of steps would they have to go through at that point? Obviously, this is not that today, but it might be down the road for another council. But how difficult will it be once everything's all hooked up?
It would be, the physical act of it taking place would be very easy.
Simple.
Open up the valves.
Made the machines.
And, you know, we'd be pretty much done. Interesting enough, Bethel has plenty of water, and they, they're actually pretty well set up for almost a full-blown development of their town. But should they require that the interconnection exists, and then, you know, it's the major starting point in trying to provide them water. So it could happen very easily.
Easy.
Very easy.
I just have to add one thing. In order for that to happen, for them to use our water on an everyday basis, we have to have sufficient safe use, which we don't have at this point.
So in your opinion, this is not opening the door to some Trojan horse where Bethel gets our water down the road five, seven years from now?
No, it is not. In fact, at that time, Bethel has spoken with the Department of Health and so forth about this actual emergency interconnection. They would support it, because they know it will not affect our safe use.
Thanks.
Through the chair, to, I don't know, to Corporation Council or to Public Works. When you mentioned the survey, there was three yes, two no, and seven no responses, what would happen if those seven no responses became actually two no? I mean, would they still be forced to be assessed on property they don't need to?
Typically, what happens is, we would, like we are tonight, present those gross nos, you know, a large amount of nos, and you guys would either authorize the project or not authorize it. If you decide to authorize it and provide, because you think it's the best thing to do in providing, you know, there might be a sanitary issue, there might be a health issue, and you guys feel that the sewer should go in to remediate that, then yes, those property owners will be obligated to, their properties will be assessed, they'll be obligated to have to pay. And that's the reason why we have this public forum, is that you actually have an opportunity to hear residents speaking for or against these projects. Ultimately, you give us direction on whether to proceed with the project or whether to not proceed with the project. And then all the money that we spent on a project up to today would, not that it would be lost, but would be reimbursed by anyone who would be coming out of the sewer fund that we have to do these projects.
With the way I understand it, then, Mr. DeRola, at some point, this will come after us with the full survey?
No, this pretty much constitutes a survey. We have only one time before resurvey for a project, I think it was, I can't remember, but I know I was working with you on it. Yeah, it would be another survey, but we typically don't like to do that. You know, we typically don't like to do that. So you either are for the project or not for the project. What ends up happening is, once residents see kind of where their neighbors have voted, and you would think they would be talking to each other, it may skew the entire survey one way or another. So, but ultimately, you guys make the decision, depending on the survey results, on whether or not to have us proceed with the project or abandon a project. And, you know, just based on, if I can just give you my feelings on this, based on what the cost is for this project, it's really not a bad deal for these properties. It's the least cost-effective, most cost-effective way to service them. And like I said, because time was of the essence, we did spend $22,000 putting in the laterals, potentially to service these properties, because the cost to do that at a later time after Bethel pays would have been literally five times that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to Ms. Iadrola. Just two questions. Number one, on the original survey that was presented, you have the numbers on the original survey?
You make your reference to the request that came in.
Original.
Yeah, I think, Farid, you have the request, the petition was signed by a number of residents?
I believe it was signed by eight, eight residents out of the 12.
Eight out of the 12 residents were part of it?
Actually, it was 11 at that time, then we added 10.
So eight out of 11 requested that we look at finding a way to sewer their properties?
Okay. Second question, how much money in engineering has the city spent on fine tuning the estimates?
Yeah, $10,000.
Pardon?
$10,000.
$10,000, so so far, we have $10,000 in the project?
$10,000 plus $22,000 for the laterals, so we have $32,000 investment.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a long, ongoing project, and a lot of work has been done by Mr. Buckley to start, and Mr. Iadrola to finish things up, and Farid, and lawyers. And Mike and I have gone through this, I think, probably about three or four years now. And I personally feel it's a good thing for both the town of Bethel and the city of Danbury, so I definitely will be supporting this project.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to the Director of Public Works, or to Mr. Day. With regard to those properties impacted by it, do you know offhand what are residential and how many residential, how many commercial?
I think they're all...
Or non-residential?
Yeah, I think they're all commercial properties. Yeah, it's a commercial use.
Just from the standpoint of historically, usually when a commercial applicant petitions us for these sewer extensions, they are much more knowledgeable as to the process, and I think that they understand what's going on here, as opposed to oftentimes, we have residents that don't appreciate some of the dynamics of the process. That being said, to echo what Councilman Visconti said, I don't think, I can't think of a recent time when a particular project has received more scrutiny and due diligence by an ongoing committee, a reconstituted committee. So given that in the report here, I think this is positive, I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a clarification to the city, or the Public Works Director, as to whether this, we're mandated in our waste treatment facility to dedicate a portion of it to surrounding communities? Is this part of that dedicated quantity, part of that dedicated requirement as far as the sewage is concerned?
No. No, this is not going to impact their allowed sewage order sent to us, because it's ours. The only thing that it's doing is traveling through their pipes to get back to us. Yes.
And the second question is actually a Corporation Council. Only a clarification from a legal standpoint, I don't really under know, but are we acting in a capacity of the Sewer and Water Authority as a common council, or how does that legally shake out?
There is the Water Pollution Control Authority, which is the county council. So you are them, they are you. You have the authority to act on this in your capacity as council members.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Speaking of, I'll try your mind, it's all over. Okay? Anybody have anything else they want to ask? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Item number two. We'll do the same thing again if we could. Mr. Iadrola, or your disting, if you'd like, it would be Mr. Corey or Mr. Day.
I'm going to hold that.
You could just please give the council a rundown of this project, how it started, when it started, how we got to tonight, November 24.
Just give you a quick history of one of the sewers that came in.
In 1996, we received two petitions, I believe, for this sewer extension. We have 18 properties in the neighborhood, and we mailed the survey bag, I believe, in September, October of this year. And the results were nine yes, nine yes, which is almost 50%, five no, 27.8%, and no response for, which is 22.2%. I'd like to point out that out of the nine, five belongs to the same owner. I don't have the exact name of the property, but it's one owner out of the... And the cost of the project is around $485,000, includes 20% contingency that we usually built in our project. And we have an existing sewer line in Merrimack Street, and because of topography, we cannot go, we cannot serve the sewer based on gravity.
Sewers up high.
Correct. Yeah. So we have to connect...
I can turn it upside down. There you go. Yeah. So Merrimack's running from top center.
That's correct.
Yeah, next to the railroad line, correct. And we have to tie to the 30-inch existing sewer line, which is a major tie-in when we go in. And there is a major drop in the back of Short Street. I'd like to add that Short Street is a paper road. Our Corporation Council have been working on identifying who owns it, but without a title search, we cannot identify who owns Short Street. Short Street and Lombardi, both are paper private roads. Merrimack is a city road. That's in general, so you can see it.
Thank you, Mr. Iadrola. I think before I asked for a motion on this, I think what I'd like to do is maybe have some discussion on it first, between the council and the department heads, you know if that's okay with the council, and if we're seeing that way. We'll open up for discussion first and try and, because I know I have some questions, and I'm sure someone's used it as well, so... Mr. Teles?
Through the chair, to end here. What is driving the cost of the project up? Do you have a feel like the pump station?
No, we're going on gravity, but there's a challenge at the end where we tie in, it's a big drop, it's a good 30% drop, and to tie to a 30-inch sewer line, it's a major. Usually, you know, it's eight, 12 inches, but nothing, and like 30-inch, it's a major time.
Is this project being done in-house, or it's going to be outsourced?
The design been done in-house.
Construction will be...
Construction will be bid out and constructed.
Mr. Jackson?
Maybe to Mr. Iadrola, the condition of the existing septic system, just what's driving the request for...
There's, yeah, there's some failing septic systems here that we're trying to address. Farid, do you know the most current number? From the Health Department?
I did not visit the Health Department recently, but the project been petitioned prior to 1996 for sewer and water to be developed, and it's possible that it's a continuation. They had not more petitions since 1980, I believe the first request came.
Through the chair, so there's probably an issue with room for repair as to connecting to the sewer?
Well, first of all, I just want to tell you, I really don't have a very good number on how many failing septic systems. I did hear that there were a couple of systems that were either failing or are on a virgin failing. Some of these lots, Farid, they're like .2 acres?
.1.
.1. Those are very tight lots to be put in a co-compliant septic system in today, very tight. So a lot of these you'd be looking at doing a repair, a band-aid, and hope that holds. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair, and I'm looking at both, just for the record, the map that the residents presented, as well as the one from the Engineering Department. Make sure I'm looking at it correctly. But if we reference over to the map that one of the residents presented, this Short Street paper road, and I'm looking on the engineering map, are Lot 4.
Can you put them side by side?
Yeah. And if you, I guess, maybe put them back further so, somewhere, so I guess everyone can see them.
Right next to her.
Yeah, right next to her. I think I brought my glasses.
You have a cell still on?
I'll have you sit up on this. Okay. Tell them.
This is an engineer, that's obvious.
And actually, one of you, if I could, just through the chair, someone's going to have to, well, from the department, I guess, maybe stand over there, because we're referencing specific things on the map. If you look at number four, you see clearly on the residents' map, and then look at number four, the corresponding four on the engineering map, which is green. Now, all the other, are any of the other properties on Short Street developed already?
No. The balance of the properties are not developed, except for this one.
Except what's four on the residents' map? Is that also four on our map?
That's correct. That's the same piece of property.
All right. Now, of those that are not developed, are those all owned by a single owner?
Except...
Except for this yellow piece.
Okay, so one, two, that's six, that's, that's five properties there. Now, does that owner that owns those five own any other properties in the petition area?
No.
Or in the assessment area?
Just these are owned by one person.
Yeah, it's five, fifty ones.
And just to follow up on the previous question with regard to any failing systems, so we don't have any, as part of the file, any reports or determinations of a public health issue based on failing systems, either by the state or by the city Department of Public Health?
Not going off.
There is no official act, correct, that we're aware of.
And reading from the report, and I don't want to keep you up there, I just wanted to make sure, I know exactly what the properties were, but reading from the report, I think Mr. Corey pointed this out, that five of the nine yeses were from one property owner, the one that owns, I presume, the undeveloped parcels on Short Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So out of the remaining property owners, according to the petition that's been submitted to a certain public hearing, one of them, which is number five, is that on Concord?
Yeah.
No, the gray one?
Five.
Five, right. Would be the remaining yes, hope, if we look at the petition that the residents presented.
That's the... Yeah, that's correct. You have one, two, three, four, five, the other balance of the yeses.
Now, we were talking about this a little bit on the council here, trying to cross-reference the petition.
May I ask, Sarah, if I have one?
I'll put a question out, just to cross-reference the people who signed against this with the purported yeses that are in green on that property. You've got one across the street on Concord. Somebody have the map up here, if I could ask them to pass it down, please, I apologize. I mean, because we only have one copy of each, you're trying to, for the entire council here, you've got on Concord...
We have five that the public speaking session, the residents say is the only yes.
On the petition, are property owners purportedly against this? Concord Street, number 14, number 12. I don't see number 10. And through the residents, am I incorrect? Is number 10 on there?
10 and 8 are owned by the same Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Somer, or they're maybe towards the top?
All right, so 8, 10, 12, and 14 on the petition are all nos. I mean, on the petition before, it's not in the original sewer petition. And then to clarify, we have three...
I'm sorry.
Seven...
I just want to make sure, are you reading from an official...
No, I'm reading from the petition that was presented during the public speaking portion, just so everybody knows how the petition relates to the corresponding properties up there.
I do want to tell you that that, those petitions are not really recognized by the Engineering Department. An official survey is the only official document that is presented to... An official survey is the only official document that is presented to you for a record.
Right, and I understand that, and just going back historically, these types of, and I know you know this, Tony, these types of assessments have caused a lot of angst on the council. We in fact even adopted sort of an informal rule, a house rule, of putting a moratorium when residents came against it, that we said, okay, if we're going to knock this down, you're not coming back here for, I think it was three years or five years?
Five.
Five years, because we don't let you guys go through this exercise over and over and over again. But that being said, the public speaking session and public participation session inherently implicates the public presenting informal items to us to consider in our decision-making process. And that leads me to another question, I don't know who can answer this, whether or not there was a neighborhood meeting on this, which is an informal meeting that many of us have done in our respective wards or citywide, if I may put, through the chair, through the chair, does anyone know whether or not a neighborhood meeting was held on this?
No.
No, it wasn't. I mean, I've done several projects to explain to the public really what they were getting into after the initial petition, to save the Engineering Department, the costs of going through the design, before people realize this could be $15,000, $20,000, $30,000 in a multi-year assessment. So, I just wanted to make sure the petition corresponds with the residence map that they've also presented as in a negative. It's a, from a percentage standpoint, thank you to the gentleman, keep your gentleman up there, I'll pass the petition and the map back to the chair. Of the nine yeses, if we really limit that to how many people said yes, it's six people as opposed to nine, which I think significantly changes the number. If we take at face value the residents, some of whom have voted yes, I see, I think, three green-colored yeses, or four, I'm sorry, up there, three of which indicate on the new, this informal petition as being nos now, that this really would change the percentages. I, absent a real compelling public health issue, I have a real tough time voting in favor of this under the current circumstances, letting the residents know that, hey, this is done for five years if we shoot this down based on their concerns. I appreciate your time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Iadrola, Mr. Corey, if you could answer this question that I have, the petition that came for this, did it come from the Short Street property owner of the four lots? Do you know if it was generated from there?
The original petition, we had seven, and only two left, one short, which voted no response, and I believe the other one in favor, which is number three, Concord Street. These are the two original petitions that were...
So all the other property owners have new owners, are you sure?
New owners, correct.
Mr. Curran?
Yes, this is more of a statement than any questions, but I built a house in that neighborhood 40 years ago, I've been living there for 40 years, and the worst thing that ever happened to that neighborhood was the sewer. Because anybody that lived there for as long as I have knew it was one-family houses in that whole neighborhood. And I look at this map, and I see one person owns four lots, and I see condominiums or cluster housing, that's all it is, because if you go down through that neighborhood, and we met here last, two weeks ago, or last week at a public hearing about plowing, there's no way your snowplows can get around Merrimack Street, because they're all multi-houses, multifamily houses, and I'm definitely going to go no on this because I know what's happened down there for 40 years, and that this is just going to continue and make a bigger problem than we already have down there. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. You said the initial request for this was in 1996?
I believe, yeah, 1996.
And then the survey we sent, the city sent out was October 22nd, 2008. Do you think that's the difference of why they changed their minds? Do you think that some of these people upgraded their septic since then?
Oh, there's no property owners, so there might have been a change of real estate in that time.
Well, you would think that they there were either almost failing or...
Yeah, I couldn't tell you.
You wouldn't know if...
I couldn't tell you, I'm willing to speculate what the conditions of the septic systems are in the neighborhood. We could have the Health Department writing a report on when the systems were in, what their expected life expectancy is, let on the systems if the council would like, but...
No, that's all right, of course. Thank you.
Mrs. Simmons?
Thanks. I'm fairly familiar with that area, I don't live up there like the chief does, but I played there when I was a kid, I was in the sixth ward I represented now. I used to ice skate on the One ML Palm, it was still on One ML Palm before they hopped out a dam and built condos there. You know, Houseman Curran's absolutely right, the overdevelopment that's happened in that area over the last 35 years has been unbelievable, and it's been very devastating to the neighborhoods. The overbuilding, by that I mean the sliding houses between houses, multi-story houses with your garages in the front, has done irreparable damage to that neighborhood, it's going to take years to recover from. I have to say, though, that in this particular instance, some of these unorthodox lots that you refer to as being as small as they are, were built, houses, some of those houses were in the 1920s, the '30s, and the systems are going to fail. And you've got a serious slope that leads right down to a public water course, and I have to think that when those systems begin to fail, the EPA, if they're not on top of this now, at some point soon will be, and we will be back here again, trying to come up with some sort of a solution for the neighborhood. I will be also voting against this. I'm very sympathetic to the plight of that area, but I have to say at some point something is going to have to be done, vis a vis the lot size and the slopes and the still river right below there. Thank you.
I would have to say, I just want to make one statement. I think that there are a lot of unanswered questions here, and I think that in light of the engineering survey and the resident survey, there's a large disparity in yeses and nos, and I myself would like to have that cleared, I would like to have that cleared up, and I'd also like to have our Health Department question answered, I'd like to have the Health Department come and tell us that there is a large amount of failures there, and it's a health issue and we need to do this, or they don't have failures and we don't need to do this. So I think that there's a possibility that we can get this back to maybe an ad hoc and possibly a new survey, so, Mr. Sadi?
I think council president is right on this, and this time I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the council as a whole that this matter be referred to in ad hoc committee as well as a new survey with the committee to read thereafter.
Second?
Question's been made and seconded by Mrs. McMahon.
Can I follow up on the discussion? I think this takes into consideration the director's need for formality in the survey process, understand the concerns of the residents, and lets us discuss technical issues in an easier setting with more participants. Thank you.
Okay. I'm wishing for recommending the council refer this to an ad hoc. I'll try your minds, all those in favor, should we probably saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you. This time, I will say more for the business becoming force. Any kind of motion? Thank you, presented by, who said it was seconded?